Meeting to order. The Stratford Planning Commission is not open for our public hearing for the petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Regular members at this meeting are Joe Garricks, Steve Rowe, Alec Ficola. I'm Sarah Graham, and alternate members are Ed Kingston, sitting in for Mr. Doolin again. Before calling for the first petition, I'd like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us that it's the policy of the commission to have the questions of the petitioner directed through the chairman. The chair reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical questions. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, the public hearing may conclude 11:00 PM and be continued at another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised on the Town Planning and Zoning webpage and in the Town Clerk's office in accordance with the state statutes. I will now advise the Town Planner to read petition, please.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So, this is a continued petition from last month's meeting. It's for 630 James Farm Road. It's the petition of developer David P. DeCilio, seeking a five-lot subdivision of subject site with lots ranging from 3,043 square feet to 3.7 acres. This application was previously approved by the Stratford Planning Commission on March 21st, 2023, but the approval expired on December 23rd, 2023, so the applicant is resubmitting his application for this time. Madam Chair, last month, we did not have one of the members present who is seated today, so you may want to ask him to testify if he has seen the meeting minutes and, you know, the video of the last month's meeting.
Yes, so for public record, Steve, have you watched last month's meeting?
I have.
All right, so Steve will now sit in on this month's portion of the public hearing.
Our regular member, Max Doolin, is absent today, so you may want to seat the alternate member as a regular member.
Is that separate? Because I already said that, and they were here last month. Yeah, Ed was here last month, and he's sitting in for Max again this month. Is the petitioner or representative present? Okay, so please announce your name and address. The petitioner has also posted a sign on the property and has now requested to submit, I think you did this last month, certificate of mailings, so that's fine. So I now invite the petitioner or representative to present your case, and if you just want to go over what we need to know for this month, just to keep it short and sweet kind of thing.
Short and sweet it will be. Thank you again for allowing me to come before the Planning Commission. My name is David DeCilio. I live at 6020 Main Street, Stratford, Connecticut, also known as Main Street Putney. I'm the owner of 630 James Farm Road, which is the property before you to be, my application is to subdivide the property into four residential building lots plus a cell tower parcel, which is very small, just to kind of compartmentalize that. At last month's meeting, there was some engineering comments, which I did not address, I was actually unaware of, actually, my bad, and some comments from the tree warden, and also some comments from the fire marshal. I'd like to address all three of those this evening. Now, the, one at a time, the town engineer informed me in his email that the drainage, which was approved previously, was inadequate because they increased the amount of drainage. So we instructed our engineer, I instructed my engineer, to increase the drainage and runoff and retention, and also to move it out of the right-of-way, which I did and I will point to right now. The town engineer also wanted a note on the map showing that lots two and three are responsible for the maintenance of an existing concrete pipe through the property, and let me point The engineer also requested to show concrete driveways through the aprons and aligning the driveway, excuse me, concrete driveways, concrete sidewalks, God forbid, sidewalks through the aprons and aligning the sidewalk on the north side of the property with the existing driveway. Now, there's no existing driveway, excuse me, I'm misspeaking, sidewalk. There's no existing sidewalk on the north side. There's actually a sidewalk about 60, 80 feet away, so I had my engineer propose we're going to connect it on town property all the way to the next sidewalk, and I'll show you that. That's this yellow line from here all the way up, and then from here, we've got to go another, how many ever feet this is to connect to this point here. The engineer asked us to add bearings to the cell tower lot, also known as Lot 5, to tie it into Lot Number 1. The engineer asked us to show an easement on Lot 1 for a UI pole. Now, we showed an easement area, but it's kind of up to the UI, they control this, so we showed it on the map. However, the United Illuminating Company is going to require not only an easement for that, but also an easement for the underground utilities going up once we locate those, if you are so inclined to approve my subdivision. And lastly, that was it on the town engineer's comments. As far as Kelly Kerrigan's comments on the trees, she wanted all trees to be located within the right-of-way, not on my property, although she encourages trees to be planted everywhere, so we agreed to include all street trees, and I will point those out. So we added five street trees per Kelly Kerrigan's request. Now, that's it as far as the comments from the tree warden and the town engineer. As far as the fire marshal, as I said last month's hearing, there was a misunderstanding by the fire marshal on the interpretation or the reading of the regulations. As designed, it meets all specifications of the subdivision regulations, and I actually called him the next day and said, "Hey, what's going on?" And he goes, "Oh, my God, I made a mistake." So he had emailed to Smitha, I believe, and I have a copy of that, saying that a 16-foot-wide driveway, well, actually 18 feet wide, but 16 feet is required for driveways longer than how many ever feet, and then it can narrow as you get down towards the lots to the minimum of 12 feet at the very end. So that was addressed in an email, which I know you have, Sis Smitha, oh, here it is, dated September 24th. Robert Daniels says, "Everything is correct, and I'm satisfied with the design. Thank you for the clarification. Let me know if you need anything. Best regards." Those are the proposed amendments to my application. Here for any additional questions or...
All right, thank you. So now, I'm going to ask, actually, the Town Planner to summarize her staff report to know if the proposal is consistent or inconsistent with the POCD.
So the applicant is correct in stating that he addressed all of the comments provided by the town engineer on October 3rd, 2024. He submitted revised drawings, and he also addressed comments of Conservation Superintendent regarding street trees, although I did not receive a confirmation from her following submittal. I had verbally spoken to her, and she said she's fine with the layout. And then, the Assistant Fire Chief also confirmed in his email dated September 26th that, you know, the accessway is different from the driveway, and it's okay to have the driveway length as 16 feet at some locations and 12 feet, up to 12 feet, so there is no problem there. The proposal in general is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development because what's being proposed in these five lots are single-family homes, and this area is zoned as residential single-family zone, and the subject property is, or the subject properties comply with the recommended land use for this part of the town, so there are no further comments on this end. I know that the applicant also has a soil erosion and sediment control plan that was submitted, and also he requested a waiver of open space regulations. Those two have to be voted separately from the public hearing portion of this application. And this afternoon, I know this is pretty late, but I did communicate with the applicant by email. I received the estimated subdivision bond fee from the Engineering Department. It's roughly $146,711. So the applicant has to post a subdivision bond as part of the approval process, along with filing the MYLR in the Town Clerk's office. And when the work is completed to the satisfaction of the Engineering Department, the bond gets released through the Planning Commission, once again, through an administrative review.
Thank you, Sis Smitha. I'll now ask my, request my fellow commission members to ask the petitioner any questions that they have on the application, so does anyone have any questions for Mr. DeCilio? Okay. I'll next be asking the members of the public to comment in favor or opposition of the petition. I will also allow general comments and observations from those who are neither in favor or opposition of the petition. Each member of the public will be provided three minutes to make their arguments. If someone wishes to speak again, you'll be given a chance. After everyone who signs up gets their chance to speak first. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the subject petition? Please raise your hand or sign up to speak. State your name and address. Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the subject petition? Okay. Is there anyone who is neither in favor nor in opposition, but wishes to provide comments on the subject petition? Okay, seeing none. So, may I now have a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting?
So moved.
A second, and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, that motion passes, so moved. Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded that the public hearing portion of the developer, Paul DeCilio, seeking the site plan approval for the re-subdivision of 630 James Farm Road be continued after the, how do I continue this? Okay. So, may I have a motion to open the administrative agenda for today's meeting?
So moved.
Aye, okay. So, a motion has been made and seconded that the commission recess to administrative session. Okay, give me a half second. I need to understand this. Okay. So now I have to call it to order? Sorry. Okay. So, now I'm going to reopen the public hearing petition for discussion and vote. Does that need a motion? Okay. Can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing petition?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, any discussion on this that you guys would like to bring forward? Okay.
Just having watched the meeting from last week, it appears the developers addressed all the issues that were in question last week. I guess to the town's satisfaction, it appears.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else have anything to say about this? Okay. Can I get a vote about the subdivision?
I motion favorable recommendation for the subdivision development.
I think you should vote as an approval or a denial, but you, when you vote, also please specify in your vote that the applicant has to post a subdivision bond with the Engineering Department, I mean, with the Finance Department, and also submit a MYLR to the Town Clerk's Office, and, you know, to be complying with the subdivision regulations.
subdivision bond and MYLR note provided to the Town Clerk.
Second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so now moving on to the next item on the agenda in regards to 630 James Farm Road, is the waiver of the subdivision open space regulations. Does anyone have any questions about this? Or need Sis Smitha or I to explain anything?
I would love an explanation, because my understanding of the open space requirement is that, I'm sorry? Is that better? Sorry about that, Joe. So, I understand the 10% requirement for open space, and I understand there's a waiver. I'm just, I'm a little unclear as to why there is even a waiver there, so could I get a better explanation of that? Thank you.
Yeah, can I explain?
Please go.
So, the subdivision regulations are pretty old, like our zoning regulations, and they need an update, too. Once our zoning regulations update is adopted, the next task is to update the subdivision regulations. But, you know, when 10% set aside is mandated in the regulations, it is my understanding that maybe it is for larger subdivisions, like where you have 25, 50 lots, and sometimes it could get too dense in a single-family zone, and, you know, the only way you can create usable open space and a sense of openness is by allowing those 10% open space regulations to kick in. But in this case, there are just five lots, and it's already built-out land, and it's closer to the forest, and the applicant does have natural open space to the rear of two lots, where there's wetlands right now, and they're being conserved. And I think, you know, it is fine to waive for this, for a subdivision of this size, because even if you were to implement it, the question will be more challenging to maintain this open space, because there is no common ownership, there is, it's not going to be deed restricted, so either the town has to take ownership and maintain it, or it'll probably become blighted in the future, because the applicant may choose to sell the lots to individual property owners. So, and according to the subdivision regulations, the conditions to grant a waiver are either, if there's any topographic or geological features that make compliance with design standards set forth in the regulations impractical, or if the size and shape of the property make compliance with design standards set forth in this regulation impractical, or if there's inability of public utilities to provide service. And, you know, while this property or these properties don't, you know, meet any of the three criteria, I think there is a good case to say, you know, it falls generally under B, the size and shape, because of the size of the subdivision. And the town engineer also expressed his concern on this open space requirement as to who maintains it. If it's a dedicated, isolated parcel that the town has to maintain, I don't think the town is interested. So, in the interest of the town and in the interest of the development, it is better to grant this waiver, so that we have a successful subdivision.
Thank you, Sis Smitha.
Good question. Anybody else? Okay, may I get a motion for approval or denial?
Sure, I'll make a motion to make a favorable report for the, sorry, for waiver of the open space regulations for 630 James Farm Road due to the size and shape of the, of the property. It makes sense?
In a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. That passes unanimously. Thank you. So on to the third thing in regards to 630 James Farm Road, the erosion and sediment control plan. Is there any discussion or question about this? Okay, everyone understanding it?
Can I make a suggestion? When you vote on this item, I recommend, you know, approving it with the conditions that are listed on Page 4 of the staff report. These are the standard conditions we, you know, we list out for any soil erosion and sediment control plan in the town. So, if you're choosing to approve this, please read those into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Sis Smitha. Those all make sense. Okay, may I get a motion, or any questions about this, I should say? Okay, may I get a motion for this agenda item?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the erosion and sediment control plan for 630 James Farm Road soil erosion and settlement control plan based on, but would also like to include the provisions outlined in the staff report on Page 4. You'd want me, I can be more than happy to read those, which include the following: All necessary siltation and erosion controls shall be in place in the zoning enforcement officer modified for an inspection prior to any site/construction work being performed. Two, immediate onsite modifications shall be employed when an erosion problem develops. Three, in evaluating this application, the commission has relied on information provided by the applicant, and if such information subsequently proves to be inaccurate and incomplete, this approval may be modified, suspended, or rescinded. And four, the applicant shall submit a more detailed plan for fugitive dust control to be provided by the zoning enforcement officer prior to building/demolition activities.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that passes unanimously. Okay. So now do I have to go back and approve last month's minutes? All right. So now we're going to go back and approve the September 17th, '24 regular meeting minutes. May I get a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you, guys. All right. Number four on the agenda, the zoning commission referrals, the text amendment to amend Section 7 of the zoning regulations to allow outdoor storage, sale, repair, and display of boats in properties near the water course as special cases in the CA districts. Sis Smitha, will you please explain this one?
Sure. So this petition is from applicant named Peter Harvey. He's seeking to add a new Section 7.1.19 to allow for the sale, storage, service, and display of boats in a CA zone. CA zone is a retail commercial district of Stratford. To give you a brief idea about why this amendment has been proposed, the applicant would like to store boats towards the rear of the Blue Goose Restaurant temporarily, you know, right now they're storing two or three blocks down the lane on Ferry Boulevard. So, you know, in general, there are some consistency findings, and there are some inconsistency findings with regards to the Town Plan of Conservation and Development's objectives for retail commercial districts, as we identified in the staff report. Oftentimes, we receive these text amendment requests for an applicant to be able to do something on their property, but it kind of, you know, applies to the entire retail commercial district once approved. And that gets a little tricky, because, you know, now the entire CA district, you know, is open to having boat storage, outdoor boat storage as an approved use if this text amendment were to be approved. So, in terms of consistency with the POCD, number one, on land use and zoning, the land use and zoning objective in the POCD is to simplify the zoning code to increase its usefulness and understandability and meet the needs of changing socio-economic conditions. This regulation appears to be both consistent and inconsistent with the POCD. While the text amendment would allow for sale and service of boats in areas close to the water, the commission should pay close attention to how CA districts might be visually impacted with boatyards in districts that are designed to be more walkable and pedestrian-friendly. It should be mentioned that the town plans investing significant resources in a complete streets network along Ferry Boulevard where the applicant plans to establish this boatyard. Number two, to encourage a mix of land uses that promote sustainable land use practices and healthy lifestyles. This regulation appears to be inconsistent with the POCD objective as, because the proposed use might distract from the town's vision for a more pedestrian-friendly commercial retail district. Number three, implementing design standards to increase the aesthetic appeal of the town's business districts and creating a cohesive environment. This regulation appears somewhat inconsistent with this objective, because the temporary structures planned by the applicant may detract from the aesthetic appeal for Ferry Boulevard that is evolving as a multiple mixed-use properties have been approved recently in this area. So the commission must evaluate if this use will contribute or detract from this momentum. Number four, streamlining the development approval process to assure that developments which are consistent with the town's development regulations are approved in an efficient and prudent fashion. This regulation does, appears to be neither consistent or inconsistent with this objective. So in terms of economic development objectives, it does appear consistent with the vision of the waterfront plan to protect existing water-dependent uses and to direct the location of new water-dependent uses in strategic locations. And in terms of supporting commercial developments by the waterfront that minimize potential adverse impacts to nearby users, this is somewhat inconsistent, because given the current momentum of mixed use and higher-density housing of Ferry Boulevard, this doesn't fit into the overall vision of the transit-oriented development districts objectives. And again, like I reiterated, it is consistent with the waterfront redevelopment and climate resiliency goals, because, you know, you're temporarily moving away these boats from the water, and you're putting them in a commercial district when there is an event, like a hurricane or, you know, just a coastal flooding event, and you're supporting a variety of public and commercial boarding services and facilities, including boat berthing, docking, mooring, and launching facilities for resident and visiting boaters, making Stratford the preeminent center, supporting recreational boarding on Hill Satanic River, and a regional destination point for visiting boaters. So I think this is something, you know, oftentimes I find this in POCD, sometimes affordable housing conflicts with climate resiliency goals and objectives, sometimes waterfront redevelopment goals and objectives conflict with land use goals and objectives, so it's something the commission has to discuss together on which way they want to guide this amendment in the town.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or discussion about this topic?
Sis Smitha, does the applicant have any recourse other than a text amendment?
I didn't understand your question.
If the text amendment is denied, can you get a waiver from the Zoning Board of Appeals or some other way to do this?
No, because there is no variance for uses. No, Stratford doesn't allow use variance.
My question, I guess, is that I read somewhere that there's, I thought I saw at least four other businesses in the area that are storing boats currently, obviously approved under old, you know, in the past, but they are doing it. So I guess the question for us here is whether we want to, I don't know if punish is the right word, but if we want to not approve this based on new regulations and his neighbors and other businesses. want to not approve this based on new regulations and his neighbors and other businesses are doing what he's trying to, or he or she, I shouldn't say he, is trying to do.
So my question is, do you, and I should have looked it up, and I don't know if it was in the paperwork given to us, do they know, do you know what is being, if this is being updated with the new reg changes, zoning regs?
I have no idea if this is going to be in the new, because the draft is evolving.
Oh, right.
It's still, like, undergoing a lot of changes. But I can suggest one thing that may help you, I think. If you were to approve this regulation as is right now, I would suggest the regulation to include some screening requirements. Because at the very least, if you want your corridors to look aesthetic and pedestrian scale and, you know, walkable and friendly to multimodal usage, then I think at the very least, you know, softening the look of the corridor with some landscaping and screening might help. Because I, sometimes I think when I walked down Bonham Avenue, if only Bonham Avenue had at least some perimeter landscaping requirements for these large lots, it wouldn't have looked as, as it is right now.
That's a good point, because I see the aesthetic appeal as well as the, because I'm on the Complete Streets Commission, so, or sub-commission, and I also know that, you know, the, as it's mentioned, that the town plans to invest in that complete street on Ferry Boulevard. So those are my couple of thoughts on this. Yes?
The existing businesses that are storing boats, are they approved, grandfathered in, or is it simply the zoning has not enforced the regulation?
I think probably they're grandfathered in. I wouldn't imagine, like, you know, somebody's doing illegal activity there, but I can't confirm this for you because I haven't done a research on the other properties.
Any other discussion or questions?
Again, I'm beating that horse here, but I thought I had read that the other businesses were approved, you know, from prior regulations. So it's not that they're not meeting regulations, just they were done a while ago and things have changed now.
Yeah, that they got a variance and variances are not allowed anymore. Anything else? Does anyone have a motion to bring up?
Well, I have a motion because as you're saying that there's no longer allows for variance of the use. Just that it's too inconsistent with the POCD. It just, for the objective that it may distract from the town's vision, putting up temporary structures distract from that Ferry Boulevard. You have new condos over there and restaurants. I just don't see it, just because the other places are there to put another one there. So I would make a motion to deny this text amendment.
Second.
It's a favorable or an unfavorable recommendation?
I would make it as unfavorable recommendation.
Second.
Over.
Aye.
Aye. Agreed. Thank you. Okay. Now moving on to number six. I read it wrong earlier. That was four. This is six. Anyway, next. Six A, the referral from the Stratford Town Council for an 824 review of our proposal to lease a portion of land at 540 Longbrook Avenue for the installation of 11 fuel cells. Sis Smitha, will you please brief us on this?
Sure. I also want to let you know that our town attorney, Bruce Jackson, is here tonight for this part of the meeting. If you have any questions for him, but, you know, I'll just read out very quickly what the request is for, and then maybe have Bruce speak to you about the details. So the town has been approached regarding this proposal to lease 540 Longbrook Avenue for installation of 11 fuel cells in accordance with the submitted drawings that were presented to you as part of the paperwork for this meeting. And so these fuel cells will be occupying a corner of the lot. And I did receive an email from the applicant this morning through our supervisor, Mary Dean, who's the director of economic development, that he's currently waiting on the lab to rerun an analytical test on one sample location within the proposed fuel cell area. And if it all comes back good, the next step would be to provide EPA and DEEP with an update on recent sampling and to confirm what their residual contaminations are on the site. And if they're okay with the applicant moving forward, he would, they would make sure that the four-foot capping is done for the soil, so they maintain the top four feet. And they're not required to do any further investigation or remediation in this immediate area, and then they can install the fuel cells. So Bruce is here, and if he wants to talk about this, you may want to let him talk.
Bruce, do you have anything to add to that?
Not really to say. If you ever looked at the road that went through 540 Longbrook, it sort of makes a circuitous route. And that was because we put it in to maximize the coverage of any contaminants at the time. So any future use is going to have to deal with the road where it is, and this is going to be sort of over on the side. And we're looking for ways to cap the contaminants. And so the idea is clean it, cap it, put something on it so that it'll be forever contained. And in this case, the fuel cell people have come to us and will pay the town $175,000 a year for 20 years if we let them use space that we don't have anything else to do with. So we are looking at leasing that, but of course, I have to ask your permission before I can do that.
Does anyone have any questions for him or Sis Smitha?
So in terms of consistency with the plan of conservation and development, it is consistent with the redevelopment and adaptive reuse of industrial, commercial, retail, and office businesses objective of the POCD. The actionable item under this, as identified in the POCD, is to continue to encourage infill development on vacant and underutilized lots.
Thank you. And for this, it will be either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation. Does anyone have a motion?
I move the planning commission make a favorable recommendation.
To the town council.
Can you add to the town council?
To the town council.
Any second?
Second.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Six B, another 824 review, a referral from the Stratford, not 824, I'm sorry, a referral from the Stratford Water Pollution Control Facility to relocate the town sanitary sewer and pump station from the middle of Zero Main Street and 550 Main Street to along Sniffens Lane and Main Street. Sis Smitha, will you brief us on this, please?
Sure. As you all may know, the Stratford Army Engine Plant has a preferred developer, and the developer is Point Stratford Development. And they would like to, as the first phase of this project, they would like to remediate the existing buildings and demolish them and clean up the site so that you can, they can prep the site for future development, which would happen as part of phase two. So they envisioned the relocation of the town's sanitary sewer and pump station, which currently run through the middle of the property. And so they would like to move it to along Sniffens Lane and Main Street. The sewer is proposed to be in an easement on the, on this property along the property line. A new pump station will be constructed in an easement on the property on Main Street, which would be above the flood zone to enhance resiliency. Due to the elevation, access to the station for maintenance, repair, and future replacement would be from the subject property. And the beneficiaries of this relocation would be the Point Stratford Renewal Development, which would have less incomparances due to the current location of the sewer, but would still have an easement on the road perimeter. The new sewer on Sniffens would provide better sewer service to the property on the south corner of Sniffens and Main Street, and the sewer main would run along Main Street and contain a section that runs from Sniffens Lane west across Main Street, which could be used to connect properties on the west side of Main Street, such as the airport hangars and Air and Space Museum and the Point Stratford Renewal Property West, et cetera. So the construction phase is indeterminate at this time, but with the DECD, Department of Economic and Community Development grant funds, the schematic design has been completed, and the town would own and maintain the sewer and pump station once completed. In terms of consistency finding with POCD, the goal for enhancing public infrastructure and utilities in the town, as outlined in the current POCD, is as follows: Provide high-quality community facilities, services, and infrastructure that are both fiscally and environmentally sustainable, while also meeting the evolving needs of the community. The objective that this proposal meets is to ensure that Stratford continues to adequately serve its residents and businesses with public infrastructure and utilities. And the action identified, the specific action identified for this objective is to continue efforts toward upgrading the town's infrastructure with regard to potential impacts of climate change. So as you can see, this proposal is consistent with the goals and objectives of the town POCD.
Thank you, Sis Smitha. Does anyone have any questions?
Cost for, cost for doing this is by the developer.
I think so, yes.
Anybody else? Okay. Can I get a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, please?
I would recommend, make a favorable recommendation with the proposal included that the water, Stratford Water Pollution Control Authority pays for the extension so that there's no cost to the town, no cost or expense to the town of Stratford. And I would say that because I would vote for a favorable recommendation based on the fact that it does meet the POCD standard of providing high-quality community facilities, services, and infrastructure that are both fiscally and environmentally sustainable.
Is it the?
I'm exactly not sure about paying because that's outside the purview of Planning Commission. Planning Commission's role is to look at the consistency with the land use goals and objectives. The financial details of this proposal have not been presented to me.
So I think just stating it a little bit differently, that you approve it, but not necessarily listing the who's paying for it.
So I will recommend a favorable approval, just on the fact that, with the caveat that there is no cost or expense to the town of Stratford, citing that it does meet the POCD standards, providing high-quality community facilities, services, and infrastructure that are both fiscally and environmentally sustainable, while also meeting the evolving needs of the community.
Thank you. In a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're almost at the end, guys. Now we have a referral from the Stratford Water, another referral from the Stratford Water Pollution Control Facility to extend the sewer line from the previously approved main line at 170 Orin Oak Lane to the center of 150 Orin Oak Lane at no cost or expense to the town of Stratford. Sis Smitha, can you brief us on this, please?
Sure. So as you may recall, this was first reviewed by the Planning Commission in June 2024, when the commission gave an unfavorable recommendation to the Water Pollution Control Authority as the petition was not submitted by the owner of 150 Orin Oak Lane at that time. And the petitioner resubmitted their application to WPCA in September 2024 by obtaining the, obtaining the signature of the current owner. And the change in this petition is that the owner is now willing to bear the cost of implementing the sewer extension to this property at 150 Orin Oak Lane. So considering that single-family homes exist between 150 Orin Oak Lane and 15 Orin Oak Lane on Orin Oak Lane, and some of them being served by septic system right now, it is the right move for the town to provide public sewer line extension to these properties. Ultimately, based on what I have discussed with the town engineer, the goal is to ensure as many properties can get public sewer as possible. At the same time, you know, it, the town should be mindful and the applicant should be made aware that this connection is for single-family homes only, because this is a single-family housing zone. And any new connections or for a proposal that may include more than one home on this lot would need, you know, resubmitting this application to WPC again for multiple connections. And I am not sure if the town would have the same consistency finding that we have found for single-family homes sewer line extension at this time. With regards to POCD's goal for enhancing public infrastructure and utilities in the town, it is as follows: To provide high-quality community facilities, services, and infrastructure that are both fiscally and environmentally sustainable, while also meeting the evolving needs of the community. So the objective is to ensure that Stratford continues to adequately serve its residents and businesses with public infrastructure and utilities. So this proposal is consistent with this goal and objective of the POCD.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about this? Or discussion?
The last time this came in front of us, we gave an unfavorable review because it was, it wasn't submitted by the owner of the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just trying to put my time machine ahead.
And this also, again, has an issue with whether there'll be any costs involved for the town or not? Is that correct?
It is no cost to the town. The applicant is going to implement on their own.
And I believe, I think I did read in there that people with the septic systems could be responsible for having to crush the septic systems. Is that, is that part of the requirement if we approve this? Don't know.
That's something WPCA will take care of. In terms of the Planning Commission's role, it is just to ensure that it's consistent with the goals and objectives of the POCD.
Valid points. Anybody else? Okay, is there an unfavorable or favorable recommendation?
I will make a favorable recommendation for the extension of the sewer line. Again, with the, as long as there's no cost or expense incurred by the town of Stratford, because it is consistent with POCD requirements for the goal for enhancing public infrastructure and utilities in the town, as outlined in the POCD.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Okay. So one of the last things on our agenda is, under number seven, is the zoning regulations update draft discussion. I think with, that it's only 7:20 that we have a few minutes to go over this so that our discussion tonight can be brought before the zoning, before their final, not approval, but their final meeting on this. So Ed and Joe both submitted memos that were in our documents, sorry, and were distributed as part of our package. So Ed had submitted it first. So Ed, do you want to summarize some of your points that you brought up?
Sure. So concentrated on the areas in the document that had significant changes, and those are listed on the, on the top, there are accessory dwelling units, boarding, boarding houses, and short-term rentals, seasonal dwellings, and multifamily developments. And some of the things, and these aren't opinions, these are
And some of the things, and these aren't opinions, these are just things that are changing and that I think, you know, as Planning Commission should be concerned about. For accessory dwelling units, item number one there was to allow for conversion of existing detached structures, such as an existing detached garage. Now, I believe the zoning commission is actually looking at that now, but that was one of the things that, that came up. The regulations limit the size of an A D U to a thousand square feet or forty percent of an existing structure, which is, whichever is less or whichever is smaller. And just wondering if that makes sense, if someone has an attached garage, that they're converting over to an A D U or even potentially an attic or, or a basement. They use the term family in the occupancy of the accessory register shall be limited to not more than two people who are members of the family. Just what is the definition of the word family in, in that particular part of the regulation? And then affordability requirements, and I think Joe brought that up in his, his memo as well, is that this is probably a great opportunity here to increase the number of affordable units in our town, right? And, you know, how do we do that, though? We have to incent people to go through that, right? Because there's a process to go through to make that happen. And I think we were both talking about doing some type of set aside or tax abatement or something along those lines. Under boarding houses, we were just wondering why short-term rentals were included in that section. This ref, this is, you know, the Airbnb and the V R B O stuff. Seasonal dwellings, there was not a definition of seasonal dwellings, and that certainly needs to be defined. And then on the multifamily development, and remember that multifamily development isn't, you know, two, three, this is eight-plus families, right? Eight-plus units. This hasn't changed. This has not changed, but we may want to discuss the multifamily developments in R S one, R S two, R S three, and R S four zones. The amount of square footage required is, is still the same. They do the calculation differently, but it's still the same. But the old regulations had a requirement in there that you would not exceed a hundred equivalent units, if you will, in any one of fifteen neighborhoods that are defined in that zoning regulation, and they've taken that out. And that's just something we should be aware of, right? Because, you know, that could potentially be changing the, the way that, you know, some of our, our neighborhoods look. And so that certainly merits some discussion. So, so those were the, the things that took away from that, thought we would want to discuss here and, and the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ed. In staying on your topics, and then we'll allow Joe to bring up his couple topics, my questions arose, like if, if someone did develop their basement and they had their own access to that basement, why is it limited to family to rent that? And then I agree with you about short-term rentals. It says that they're not regulated activity in the town of Stratford, but my question, are they allowed? And why, why is this in the, in this section? So I agree with you on that point. I mean, I agree with some of the other things. Those were just my two that stood out. Does anyone else have any discussion or questions on these things that Ed pointed out?
Well, I, I think that was a great point that you made about the affordable housing, which, because there is such a push by the state to get towns up to a certain threshold, and this would certainly be a great opportunity for us to maybe resolve part of that without doing it with new construction. And maybe when new construction does come in, it takes that off the table for the town. So that's, I thought that was great.
So just to let you know, the Stratford Housing Partnership also met a week ago and last Thursday, I think, and they discussed the A D U proposed regulation. And after that, I had a conversation with our, my colleague, Jay Hibansky, who's a project manager for this, and I mentioned to him that probably it would be helpful if, you know, there's some kind of oversight on A D Us that are allowed in flood zones of the town, so that's to not, to make sure that, you know, the town's M S four permitting goals are also met. So that's one feedback I have suggested, and he was willing to look into it. And I think the zoning commission would explore that further.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, right? Because I, I think what we're saying here is if, if we allow A D Us to show up in flooding zones, now we're going to have FEMA requirement problems, right? Because we're, you know, putting more people in, in flood zones, right? And so, so that, that's certainly something that should be included in our feedbacks. Thank you, Sir Smitha. Anyone have any, any, any other questions or concerns on, on this?
Do you want to present your?
And I would just point out that the converting a garage into an A D U would have the potential for exacerbating the parking problems in some neighborhoods. Presumably, two people are going to move there, that's two more cars with the loss of two parking spaces. So just a comment.
I, yeah, I absolutely agree with you there. And I, they did have language in there about parking spaces for, or off-street parking for the number of people living in the A D U as well. And, you know, if, if they do that, you know, they're going to have to show that they, they have those parking spaces. But it's, it's a good, it's a good point.
It, the regulation is far, it's less than one space, I believe, for an A D U.
Yeah, I think the, the thought process there on the A D Us is, you know, people aging in place, you know, but, right? And I know, I, I get it. And, you know, as, and you're thinking, you know, mom and dad growing old in place, you know, they have a car, then one day they wake up, they're not driving anymore, right? Because, you know, they're, they're older and stuff. But, you know, I certainly understand the, the concern about parking spaces.
Yeah, and Jay Hibansky said, the sooner we, as a commission, provide feedback to zoning, the better, because they're wrapping up the final draft. So it's your call if you want to send your preliminary feedback. And then, you know, the draft, the final draft, he said, would be officially referred to this commission sometime next week. And once it is referred, you have only thirty-five days to review and comment by statute. So November nineteenth is the date of our next public, I'm sorry, next Planning Commission meeting, when you have to discuss this at length by looking at the final draft. But in the meantime, if you have preliminary thoughts, you're welcome to convey those to the zoning commission. Yeah, it'll be nice to have a motion so that you know who agrees with it and who disagrees with it. But before you do that, I suggest you also go over Joe Garrick's comments, so you do everything together.
Yeah, I thought, do you have any other things to bring up? I thought I offered, I'm sorry.
No, I think I spelt it out in the memo. My opinion is that the town needs more parking spaces, not fewer, in residential neighborhoods. I spoke to Jay about this, and his general comment was that no, no zoning department is increasing parking regulations. They're looking to increase density, and I see this as a quality of life issue. In the examples I cited, I would also mention that if you drive by the top of Broadbridge Avenue, just below Barnum Avenue, there's a tremendous number of cars parked on front lawns because there's no off-site parking paved over front lawns. I think we've got to address this. It's not nineteen fifty where households had one car, now they have three, they have four. So I think we had to swim upstream on the parking regulation. The affordability, as Ed mentioned, the town of Shelton adopted an affordable housing plan with a sliding scale. I think Stratford could do that, and maybe tax incentives are necessary to approve that, but I think that's a good idea. The final thing is, I, I don't think that there's been a lot of communication from the zoning department, zoning commission, about what concrete changes are being proposed. And I think more information should be disseminated to the public. The final draft should be publicized, and there should be a public hearing.
Thank you. In regards to your communication, did you get this document when zoning was here and presented?
Yes, I'm speaking about communication with the broader public.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Does anyone have any questions or discussion about those topics that Joe just brought up? All right. I think maybe bringing a motion to send, to send this feedback over to zoning before their final draft next week. Can I get a motion to send our feedback over?
I have, I motion to send our feedback over to the zoning commission.
And a second for that?
Sure, a second that.
All in favor? Aye, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to draft the letter based on, you know, these two memos and also the comments that you have had today. And I will share the draft with everyone by email.
Great.
Hoping that everybody takes one quick glance at it before the chairman signs the letter, and then I will communicate that to Jay Hibansky.
Great, thank you.
You, you'll incorporate the feedback from here, like the flood zone?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, last thing on our agenda, and in your packet was sent next year's twenty twenty-five calendar meeting. So did everyone get to, get a chance to take a look at this? It is still the third Tuesday of the month, with an organizational one in January, followed immediately by our regularly scheduled one. And then the third Tuesday for every month of twenty twenty-five, starting at six thirty as again, here in this council chambers, that's what I was looking for. Can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five calendar?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Second.
I think we're all in favor. Thank you. Okay. We did good. It's seven thirty-four, and I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Do I need, I think I need a motion, motion to adjourn? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you, guys. Great night.
Thank you. You did great. They're trying to steal you to come for a while.
No, no one said that to me, and I said it to someone, I will not do it.
I like you here.
Well, it wouldn't be until next year, anyway, and I, my turn would be.